Good evening, everyone. I don't think we have any citizens to comment. I don't see any names up there on the screen. I don't see anyone hiding in the audience, so we're good.
That's going really well at school. I think it's lifted everyone's spirits. At the high school, our trimester ends on Friday, and a new one will begin on Monday. So this is our last trimester of the year. Very exciting, seeing as how I am a senior. It's my last one. And on Monday, spring sports are going to begin. So the winter sports have already wrapped up. So a new season is going to be beginning, which is really exciting. I play a spring sport, so I'm looking forward to it. I wanted to kind of just give a little spotlight to a junior at our school. Her name is Catherine DeFosse. A change or catalyzed movement. And we're still sticking with Rocket of the Week, which are students that faculty and administration just believe are doing a great job. And so so far, we've had Natalie Zona, Shimon Wright, Michael Nelson, and Eve Lucier. So I think that's really special. They just announced your name. And then I think you get a small reward for it. But it's just nice to be recognized. The ski club just returned from J-Peak, which was a little weekend getaway. So they were they returned Sunday night, and it was a really great trip from the pictures and what I've heard. And so Mr. Young, Mr. Pratt, and Mr. and Mrs. Berg were chaperoning, so we appreciate them. And other than that, I know that was a lot. I believe that is everything. And I spoke with Ally, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. And she kind of just gave me notes to add, which I included. So that is everything I believe I have to report on.
Awesome. Well, that was a great report, as always. So sorry that you didn't get your nomination because of COVID, but you are definitely an all-star in our book, no matter what. And we appreciate you every other week. So that's been great. And then just got a couple of questions. So what sport are you playing in the spring?
I play tennis. I'm actually a captain this year, which is exciting.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, at least that didn't get ruined. That's great.
Exactly. I've been looking forward to it for quite some time now.
And I agree about the removal of the masks or making them optional. It's really I've seen so many smiling faces. The whole face of the school just changes, really. So for the better, of course. It's just been great. And now with spring hitting and sports starting up, it's going to be awesome. And regarding the small prize that Rocket of the Month gets, Mr. DeLong Champ is here with us tonight. So if that prize is too small, I'm sure we could probably get him to open up his wallet and maybe help out.
You know, I think you're right. You know what? When I'm nominated for Rocket of the Week, that's when I'm going to advocate for a little boost, if you know what I mean.
Oh, I know what you mean. He's right here, so we have no problem.
Jasmine, you can't see me, can you?
I can't. I was upset at first because I knew what you said. You said earlier that you were going to be at this meeting, and then I didn't see you. And I'm like, what is he talking about? He's going to be at this meeting. What a fib.
Isn't he always with you?
In my soul.
Jasmine, he has one of those faces that's not really made for TV. So we're keeping him off in the back of the room.
Your mask, buddy.
But no, that was a that was a great report, as always. Does anyone have any comments for Jasmine?
No. Sorry you have to put up with them.
Yeah, sorry you have to put up with me.
It's okay.
You're supposed to say, no, he's great.
That's what I meant. When I say it's all right, that translates to, no, he's great.
And in that case, thank you for that. And and thank you for the report. It's great, as always. So enjoy your evening, and we'll see you next time.
Thank you. You as well.
Take care.
Thank you, Jasmine.
She's awesome. We now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jasmine touched a little bit on our COVID situation with the lack of masks, which seemingly continues to diminish as people get more comfortable to be back. So I am also hoping to keep this part of my report very short because I think we've done enough talking about COVID for the past couple of years. So just to give you a little update. As you all know, we continue to do symptomatic testing in schools through that was part of our test and stay program. So the week we returned from vacation, starting the 28th, we tested eight students who were symptomatic. Last week, we tested 20. Not surprisingly, I think those numbers make sense, but I still think they're very reasonable. You've seen our positives have remained pretty low. So that week we returned, we had 15 total. Last week, we had 13. And as of this week, as of today, we have seven this week. So still what seems to be reasonable numbers, which we'll continue to watch. But it really is a change in tone at the schools to have staff and students without masks and many with. But the whole vibe just has changed in the classroom. So it's it's good. So I don't know if anyone has any questions on any of that.
I was just going to ask, are you seeing a lot of other kinds of absences? Or is it mostly the COVID numbers?
Yeah, so I think absences are actually in pretty good shape. But we have had a couple of spots, like the preschool went through a little stomach bug kind of thing. So there are pockets of that coming up now, which we're not surprised to see, but nothing that's putting our attendance out of whack.
Good, great.
Through the chair, it is nice to see. I think parents have a better perspective of illness now. And so when a kid, maybe prior to COVID, should have been home because they were sick, now they are kind of staying home. I know my own. I kept home because he had a cough and a runny nose. I was like, oh, nope. Where before, maybe I would have sent him. So I think parents are kind of
A little more cautious.
A little more cautious about that, which is good.
And we continue to try and remind them of that, right? If we stay home when we don't feel well, everyone stays healthy. So the next item on the agenda is about school choice seats for next week. As a committee, you know, you had agreed to up to 100 or 100 seats. I've met with Mr. DeLong Champ and Mr. Desto. We've looked through our enrollment numbers. We've looked through we looked at the number of seniors that will be leaving us this school year, who are school choice students. And seemingly, we have 12 who are leaving. Based on enrollment numbers, we looked at potential withdrawals that we might have over the course of the year, the number of new registrations we get over the course of the year. I bring to you that my recommendation for this year is that we stay at that additional number of 12, which will bring us to a total of 90 seats in the district, right, keeping the ones that the students that are already with us. So pretty much a same same, which will have a minimal impact on our overall enrollment, given what we've looked at for, again, enrollments, withdrawals, and our current student population. So I don't know if anyone has any questions.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept an additional 12 students into the Auburn Public Schools via school choice for grades six through 12 for 2022, 2023 school year.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that?
Through the chair, I actually have a comment and then a couple of questions. So typically, the most that we've ever had presented to us to ask to add would be five in any given year because enrollment tends to swing quite a bit. And we think some are leaving unless this 12 is solely from seniors in high school that are all graduating. Do we have 12 school choice seniors that are leaving?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so this keeps us at basically the same same spot we were at this year for number of school choice students in total.
Okay. And then the other question I have, which we usually also see, it seems like our schools are really full right now. And I know that as a committee in the past, we had really looked at the optimal number of class sizes to be a size of 25. And usually, if any change, even if it's just backfilling, we just have a grid of kind of what the class sizes look like right now. And I bring that up specifically because I know we have a bubble in grade eight and grade nine. We have a lot of kids.
Particularly eight going into nine, yep.
Right, right. Which we've the entire time this class has trickled through. We have had to finagle some things. And I would say my personal concern about that, in addition to just the fact that for high school curriculum, we've actually had to spread out our math and our English, which is good. We want that to be spread out over three tries instead of two to kind of make up for that COVID gap in learning. Even just in my own health classes, I'm seeing that we have some high numbers in some of the core classes. Not 50, but I would just feel more comfortable if this up to the committee, but maybe tabling this so that we can have some more information about what things are right now.
I'd be happy to do that, certainly.
And I'll defer to the committee. I'm just one of five, but it's just to
What do you want to table?
I just would like some additional information. Usually, when we have any discussion about school choice, even if it's to backfill positions, we just get another look at what do our class sizes look like? Where are maximum and minimum? We look at the fact that, you know, we're trying to go for 25. So that would be my personal request. I don't know if the committee agrees. It's just to get more information before we
As long as it doesn't interfere with the selection process, then
It shouldn't because this is open until the end of March. So we're not even at the point that we're selecting students yet.
Okay. I mean, if I would, I would feel more comfortable with that, but if everyone else plays way in.
And then is there a way? I don't know with school choice to like maybe accept at the sixth grade level instead? Or is that not? Is it just kind of random?
Well, depends. I'm not sure if I understand your question, but it depends on who we have for applicants, right? So if we had no applicants for sixth grade, we wouldn't take any in, right? We would look at those those other spots where the kids were going. I will tell you, you know, and I suspect this is the case in years past with very heavy grade six and very heavy grade nine, right? And in looking at this, just at what we have so far, and Mandy can attest, we're still getting applications in. I don't know that we can accept any students at grade nine.
Well, right.
We can kind of spread that out. We have to. I think we have a sibling that might have to go into grade nine because they were here previously. But grade nine is very heavy, and we were going to guard against that. So I believe this gives us the flexibility to determine the grades in which we can accept those students. It's it's not just a random pick. I think we would have to guard grade nine for sure.
Well, that's good. So we can pick grades.
Right. Because I think in the past, it had just been first come, first served as long as the students were in good standing. I think that is how they This is going way back, but it was really and there might have been preference for staff members of Auburn Public Schools. You know, there were certain things that did come into play, but I just want to make sure we have a good we as a committee have a good handle just because we do have some There's been a lot of things changing the COVID. COVID has changed the landscape of everything, unfortunately.
We were definitely going to guard grade nine because we really can't, given that we often have a number of students who even go to Bay Path, and then we're always unsure of the numbers that may return because we do get students that return. So that was part of the conversation that we had about that. But yet, there are the spots where we can fill some kids in. So I can I'm more than happy to provide more information. It's my first go around with this, so sometimes I don't know what should
That's why I brought it up, just because we want to make sure it really and this is the first time since I've been on the committee that we've had a bubble go all the way through. You know, we've watched these kids since kindergarten.
I think that was my second grade. We had a very big second grade, yes, that we got to like 110.
Yeah.
And yeah, so that was when we added a teacher at that grade level.
Right. And then at Swiss, we had to do the same thing as they went through third, fourth.
Yeah, kind of moved right up. Yeah.
Would you like to rescind that motion, Mr. Harrington?
Yeah, sure. Do I have to like re-read it and stuff?
No, you don't have to re-read it. Just say, I would like to rescind that motion.
I will rescind that motion.
You would rescind that second.
I'll rescind my second.
Okay. And we'll just look for further information for next time.
Sure.
Sounds good.
No problem at all.
All right. Moving on.
All right. So the next item just has to do with Wednesday, March 9. We presented the budget to the Town of Auburn Finance Committee. They voted unanimously to support the budget as presented, which was an increase of 3.15 or $881,673. The town administrator, Jacobson, and assistant town administrator, Kazanovic, were very supportive. We're hoping to hold our public hearing on April 6 at 6:30 and send the final budget to the town for a vote during the annual town meeting on May 3. But very lots of support. They were very positive. The one question they did have is I think you're aware that we had the town had gotten a grant to do a study on hiring a human resource person that would be shared. So there were some questions about that if we were in support, and certainly we are. So yeah, let's hope that all works out and we get some We don't have that report yet, but we are hoping that that would be that would be very helpful to the district, I think.
Thank you to everybody for putting in all the work to get that over there.
That was great. An update on the Bryn Mawr parking lot. Again, just for your information, I had shared this at one of the last meetings. We attended another meeting on March 8 for a second discussion on the plans for the parking lot and driveway adjacent to Bryn Mawr School. The plan was approved by the planning board with a couple of additions. They had asked us to add a second gate to make sure that that driveway was secured at both ends so that there was no chance that anyone could get in at either end. They asked for some pull-in parking rather than back in so that the houses at the far end of the field wouldn't be getting headlights in the windows all the time. A few very minor things, some signage. But they were very pleased with the changes that were made to the plan and the recommendations. So that's great. Mr. Fehe then went to Conservation Committee, which really they were just looking for a minor change in the location of the current dumpster with a new pad to put that on. So that was all approved. So Phase One, which is the paving of the current parking lot and along the side of the building, that's already in motion. That should happen this summer. The second phase will now require additional meetings with the DPW and town leadership to look at a funding source for that, to see if it's feasible. But we had to go through that planning process first to see what it and get some now get some quotes, see what it would actually cost. And then we can pursue it from there. So first steps are taken on Phase Two.
Sounds good.
Any questions?
Nope. On to new business.
Okay, we are here tonight. I have Mr. DeLong Champ with us in your packet. You'll find proposed changes to the Auburn High School Program of Studies. It includes additions in the areas of fine arts, unified programming, social studies, student support services, and clubs and activities. I don't know if anyone has any questions about any of the offerings, but I'm sure Mr. DeLong Champ can give you a little bit of an update on that.
Well, it's good to see you guys.
Good to see you.
Let's see. How sensitive is this area if I move this a little bit? Is this
I think you're okay.
You'll hear it if it doesn't like it.
Fantastic. Keep a finger. So as we discussed last year, and I know that Dottie, you just brought up a few minutes ago, the first area was to continue our work with, especially because of COVID, adding the three trimesters of English and math for our freshman class. We found it to be incredibly beneficial throughout the first two trimesters this year. It's helped us with pacing reinforcement. I think students will see that we'll be able to circle back to maybe challenging concepts that might have been difficult for kids earlier in the year. And then, at the same time, maybe even be able to explore concepts that they might see in their sophomore year. So we do find great benefit in the three trimesters. So we're going to we are going to continue that. I can take questions in between each one or go through? Do you guys have any? Would you guys have any questions in regards to?
Through the chair, do they have the same teacher?
They do not, no. And it's a combination. I mean, I would say there might be a small portion of them that could get lucky and end up with the same teacher. But I think most students might have the same teacher two trimesters and then a different teacher for trimester three. That being said, the team does meet monthly. They're all working together to make sure that there isn't really any kind of gaps for the kids. And it's sometimes it's nice, I think, that yeah, a different approach. I mean, we've all had that experience. We might have had that teacher who that we, as a student, maybe for whatever reason, there wasn't that connection. And to have a different voice sometimes is helpful. Whether reinforcement of a different voice is super helpful. But we've we have found great success with the program. So so that's that's a good thing. Fine arts. So we have our new art teacher, Maggie Duffy. I think you guys got a chance to meet her last year. And Maggie came to me, I think, as early as probably October, super excited about trying to incorporate a new elective into our art programs. She's she's added a 3D sculpture, so exactly what it sounds like in that description. She showed me some examples of the work. I really feel like I haven't been in her classroom, I don't, maybe seven, 10 times this year, maybe more than that, actually. I think the kids are going to truly really enjoy the experience. It almost takes it almost gets you to a place where that next step with almost engineering in some way. So it's it's something that we can still take the same class size. So we have no deduction in class size. We polled students, and there's a high student interest. So I think there's some excitement about adding a new art class to our electives. Unified learning. We've had we've had several different unified programs. I wanted to make sure that this was in our program of studies because I don't know if it had always been listed in our program of studies. There's been a lot of work from our special education team and some of our and some of our, like, for example, our phys ed team, as well as Mr. Bergman. This particular year has done a whole course on digital media with the kids. So they're out and about in the building. They're taking pictures. They're going back into the classroom to edit, refine. The kids are so much more technologically advanced than I ever was.
Yeah.
For sure. So that's that seems like it's been a real, real success for our kids. Social studies. We've had a lot of focus on UDL this year. I know that Dr. Chamberlain's probably mentioned that several times. And this is kind of the sweet spot to that. So our juniors and seniors will have this elective course where they can actually explore periods of history of their choice, complete projects, and then present and report back to the class. So to me, I think there's so many things that help get them ready for post-secondary experiences just with the fact that their research, the technology inclusion, and then the fact that the public speaking component and getting in front of the class to present about these periods of time where they're almost teaching themselves. So we are excited. It's something that we've been talking about for a long time. Ms. LeBeau and her team has done a really nice job with putting that together for us. Over the course of the year, as you know, and again, I keep going, we go back to COVID, we've had to put a lot of focus and time and energy into supporting our kids through the trauma that we've all experienced over the last two years. I feel like over the past six or seven months, you know, I'll speak about the Bright Program first. We've worked with the specialist. We've refined, improved. I'm really lucky with the two the two faculty members that are actually working in the program, Diana McLaughlin and Ashley Fagan, or Ashley Ponstelion, her married name. And they're just the connections they're making with kids who have gone through some really troubling times and some challenging situations. And then their individualized programming has just been it's been a joy to watch. Watching the kids who might have seen a place where school was really, really hard and to know that there's people there to support them has truly been it's truly been a gain for us and a win. So we think we found the right formula at the high school in an effort to support these kids in some of these situations. So that's that's super exciting. The other program that we're working on, and I know you guys have seen it before in our program of studies, is the Enterprise Program. Over the last year and a half, it's been a series of just like, I don't want to say one-shot classes, but what we're trying to do is actually create Oops. Oh, that's a problem. Try to make it more of a full program, like an inclusive program. We are trying creatively to look at ways to add vocation vocational elements into the program. We know that the traditional high school might not be great for that 2% of the of the population. And we're trying to figure out alternatives for those students while, at the same time, giving them something meaningful. So we're I'm hexed. Sorry. So we are that's something that's ongoing. I've met with our Enterprise team of teachers, and we're in the process of refining what we have already in place. So that's very, very exciting. I know that Dottie might have talked to you guys a little bit about this in the past. Really, really excited to partner with First Robotics. We had a meeting with them and a team from WPI probably two months ago. They surprisingly immediately took us on to partner with Sutton Public Schools, my old home. And and as they were, I mean, Sutton, as you might know, is a really small town. So they didn't have a large membership of students to really draw from because kids are pulled in so many directions. So they were looking for another school to partner with, at least for the time being, until we can maybe assisting in our own programming. We had our first meeting. We might have had, I believe, 30 students. And a lot of them just wanted to know, what is this program about? What are we offering? And I know that it's
Video modulation.
Continue?
It's okay.
Okay. Sorry. So at the end of the day, we they did compete in their first competition. They actually legitimately create and build a robot. For somebody that's not mechanically inclined at all to know that they have tools and instruments in machinery in Sutton that actually will build all of the parts to make a working robot is fascinating to me. The team building, the coordination,[1497.27] The team building, the coordination, the fact that they would get to partner with other schools, and then they compete. So they literally start with nothing but like control panels and things that, again, don't make a lot of sense, and then. And then they go from there to a functioning robot that actually competes in a contest and actually completes an assignment, so to speak, whether it be throw a ball, catch a frisbee, run up a wall. It's, it's really pretty, pretty great stuff. So that's something that we're gonna continue next year. Our hope is at some point in time that we can have our own team. Not that I don't love my friends in Sutton, but I just know that it might be just easier logistically to be able to come to our school and have everything we need and have that team come and, and work with our students. So I think that's all. I don't know if you guys have any questions?
Any questions?
I just have a comment. I remember back a few years ago, we had kids in, at Swan, at Swiss doing robots, and they did very well, and I think they traveled to a competition in Tennessee or Kentucky or something like that.
Right, yeah.
That was a club, and we had, I think we had a volunteer who, who ran the club, and I think maybe she took on a, a small stipend at some point, but I don't think it was anything that we sustained.
Yeah, I think part of that is COVID hit, right? So all, that wasn't after-school program, that wasn't embedded in the day. So I think something like that will return, but I think that's what, I think that took the hit.
Because it seemed like there was a big interest in robotics in Auburn.
Definitely.
Yeah.
And we, yeah, we do have, we do have some programming, some coursework that ties into some robots, not to this scale. You'd have to see it to really believe it. It was fascinating to kind of watch what it does, but we, we do have some smaller-scale things that we do in our classrooms where the kids can build from the ground up.
Good.
So, I mean, there's a real passion. The fact that we're tying to WPI too, and we're getting, we're sharing their resources, their, their enthusiasm, just creates all kinds of endless opportunities for our kids. That's what's most important. So, and I will second, you know, Jasmine spent a lot of time talking about all the great things. Seeing you, seeing you without your masks is just as equally gratifying. And it has, you know, I think, and Karen would probably say the same, it has, it's kind of like helped us turn a corner, the light at the end of the tunnel a little bit, because it has been really hard. The trauma has been tough to endure for a lot of, for all of us. So I, you know, there's a lot of great things happening at the school, so. But thank you for your time.
And to your comment regarding those students at risk, I think that's awesome that we found staff that are a good fit. And I know at least one of those staff members, and, and I truly believe that, you know, it's in her heart to make sure that the kids are being taken care of, and I'm sure that's the case for both of them. But no, it's good to hear that we're not leaving them, you know, we're not leaving them behind and that a connection's been made, and hopefully the majority of them come out of this strong.
Yeah. We are seeing real gains. It's, it's, it's fantastic.
I just love hearing that stuff. So we know that the stronger students who, who typically don't have a lot of issues are gonna pull through, so but when we can pull up those weakest links who are really struggling, that's really what it's all about.
Yeah.
That's why we're here.
Give everyone a chance.
We appreciate your efforts and your entire staff.
Yeah, I have a really nice team, so, very, very fortunate. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about the stat, too.
Oh, God.
You kept smacking it around. Have a nice night.
Take care.
Need a motion?
Oh, to accept it, yeah. He's so, he's so soft-spoken. That thing goes crazy.
Entertaining a motion to accept the Program of Studies, the changes, I should say.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposed changes to the AHS Program of Studies for 2022, 2023.
Go second.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Sounds good.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, there's a vote.
The next item under new business is the Mileage Reimbursement Request Form. You do have a letter in your packet from CFO and Assistant Town Manager, Mr. Kazanovich. They recently submitted to us that they, in accordance with Section 6.02 of the town's bylaws, the reimbursement rate is, will be amended to 58.5 cents per mile, consistent with the 2022 IRS rate, and it would go into effect on March 14th. Seemingly, we have to put that through for your agreement to that fact, which is a good thing. For the few people that we do pay mileage to, it's a good thing, so.
Yeah.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept the updated mileage reimbursement rate as set forth by the town.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, there's a vote.
Thank you. I also give you an update. This may probably should have been under maybe old business because I did talk to you previously about the Office of Civil Rights having done an investigation on our website. This went back to a complaint that was filed, honestly, three years ago. So they finally came around, and we did receive a letter that's also in your packet saying that we have remediated all identified barriers on the tested pages that would have impeded the ability of people with disabilities to access the district's online programs, services, and activities, and that they determined there was insufficient evidence that we had violated Section 504 or Title II in relation to that. So they were very complimentary, and I would say Maureen Elliott, who was in our Technology Department, embraced the need for the changes to be made. She did so quickly, efficiently, effectively, and honestly, we got lots of compliments from the OCR that they had never had anything go so smoothly. Because in two, they gave us two short weeks, what they said was a short turnaround for things, and she had everything done. So, and it honestly made our website better, so it was a good thing to go through because there were some things that needed to be improved, and we got that feedback, so.
Great.
Okay. Also, keeping with the good news tonight, we were informed on March 10th by Acting Chief Lemon from the Auburn Police Department that Officer John O'Brien will take over as the new School Resource Officer for the Auburn Public Schools. I know Officer O'Brien from my days as principal at Bryn Mawr School, and he would come and speak to our, at our PTO meetings. He had a great connection with families. He's very even-keeled and just, just an all-around great guy. He does have to go through some training, so he won't officially step into that role until either late spring or early summer, but everybody was just super happy about that. So we welcome him to the team, and we appreciate the time the PD put into making the selection.
Good.
That's great. I think he'll be a great fit.
Yep. Also, and under information, this is something that we're sharing because we are in support of this grant, I, I believe. So the Shared Street Grant is a state-funded grant to improve public health, safety, mobility, and strengthening commerce. The town has applied for this grant to the tune of $177,712, and this money would help to replace, I didn't even know they were called Blink-o-matic School Zone Signs, but if you look at them, it kind of makes sense because they're probably from that long ago when we had Blink-o-matic kind of things. And install actuated blinking crosswalk signs, which are more like what you see near the high school, radar speed signs, and a lidar scope to measure speed. This grant will also accommodate handicap sidewalk ramp improvements at the crosswalks. It was spearheaded by Julie Jacobson, Ed Kazanovich, Tom Lemon, Provisional Chief of Police, and his team, as well as Joanna Paquin from the DPW Director. And so we are hoping that, they've asked us to spread this far and wide, which is part of the requirement of the grant, that they make this public, that they have pursued this money. And certainly I will keep the, the board informed if we are, if they are awarded the money, but it would be a great addition for some of the things that it can offer to us.
Wait, so through the chair, I just have a question. Would we get all of these signs?
Yeah, so I think that depends on the award of the grant, right? You don't always get awarded full, full funding, but that's what they've looked at, yeah.
Very thorough.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Also, under information, as you know or may know, we still have on the Auburn High School grounds what's called, known as the Green Dome.
Yep.
Which is the dome.
It's falling apart.
From the previous high school before our new one was built. There are, there's a committed group of Auburn High School alumni, mostly from the class, graduating class of 1966, who've been working to raise money to update and maintain the Green Dome. Mr. Fahy and I met with Julie Jacobson and Ed Kazanovich and seven members of the group on March 8th to kind of go through the steps that need to take place, right? Because it is a structure on school property, and there are requirements that go through with town, town support and permitting and that kind of thing. So they also have to go check with the Auburn Conservation Committee, as there's a small stream right near there, if you're aware. So they may come to, to present to you at an upcoming meeting, but wanted me to kind of make you aware that this was happening in the town. I think there have been some things on Facebook about fundraising, there are things around town where they're raising money, because it is intended to be privately supported. So, I don't know.
Yeah, I noticed the other day it was kind of looking kind of shabby, so I was wondering what was happening to it.
Yeah.
Yes, there's been quite a lot of debate on Auburn sites about what to do with it.
Yeah, there's been some debate.
I miss all that, yeah.
You're lucky. There is. That's why they have to get a special company to do the abatement.
Yeah.
Yeah. It used to be on the roof, so it didn't matter what was in it.
Exactly. Do you know if they're gonna come to us asking for funding, or?
No, they won't come to ask for funding. If anything, they would just come for information. They recognize that Town Manager Jacobson shared with them, there was a previous school committee ruling that the maintenance of the said Green Dome would not fall on the school department at any time, and they are well aware of that. So it would be more for informational purposes to let you know what they, what they plan to do and that type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right, moving on.
Okay. This is the Chester P. Tuttle Post 279 donation. The Auburn Legion Post 279 presented Brian Davis, our Athletic Director, with a $100 donation to help defray the cost of the commemorative T-shirts which were purchased for the Tarantino Cup varsity football game, and asking for your acceptance of the donation from, from the Post 279.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept the grant to the donation of $100 from the Chester P. Tuttle Post 279.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
It's very nice of them.
Yep, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, there's a vote.
So again, I think, keeping with good news, certainly for the people listed here, I think, but maybe not so much for the Auburn Public Schools. We do have several retirements, and I was, I just was not sure if you were aware of these upcoming retirements. So Mrs. Reedy, our Director of Pupil Services, will retire at the end of August on the 31st. Eileen Dunnehugh, Assistant Principal at Auburn High School, will retire effective June 30th of this year. And Marie Mahan will be leaving us as Principal of Bryn Mawr School effective June 30th of '23. So she will be with us for one more year, but just wanted to let the committee know.
Yeah. Take me a minute.
Yes, yes. So one more year with her.
I'm sure we'll have a chance to say goodbye.
Yes, yes.
To all of them.
Marie Mahan's my niece. She's not old enough to retire.
That's absolutely true.
She's just a kid.
That's right.
She's moving on.
I remember taking her for bike rides.
Think of what you could do in her retirement. You guys can go bike together.
We used to pick blueberries and put them in our socks.
All right. Those must have been tasty. Some tasty fruit right there.
A little mushy.
Move on to teaching and learning report.
All right.
Gaddix. We gotta have fun.
As we've done throughout the evening tonight, I just wanted to share to you that we are moving closer to normal every day, and it just feels really good. So I won't read all of this, but you know, students at Pakachaga are having their March Madness Reading Challenge, which is something that they've done from years ago. Bryn Mawr School did have the Discovery Museum actually come into the school for some presentations on light and laser, physical properties of matter. Swanson Road, they're focused on reading comprehension. They all have these hands-on social studies projects right now with kids I'm very engaged in. Middle school class are learning about thermal energy. I included a few pictures, photographs at the end of your packet, which I think I'm going to try and do or move forward to keep doing that, right? Because the kids are at the forefront of what we're, what we're working on each day. They also had their parachute design and drop project. It's a little hard to see in the picture, but they're throwing their parachutes off the stairs at the middle school. In Auburn High School, Algebra I are working on solving linear equations, rational equations in Algebra II, geometry, kids are getting ready for the MCAS, but they're doing this through partner worksheets where each person has a different problem, but their answers have to match. So they have to self-check. They solve math problems to solve a crime, they do scavenger hunts. So teaching and learning is alive and well, and feeling a lot more like what we remember. So it was just so easy to gather some quick facts, and it just, just made me feel good, so thought I would share.
That's great.
And again, you can see some of the pictures at the back, so.
Does this one here, a blueberry sock?
Yep.
Burning it.
It's a torch.
Yeah, that's a torch.
They're cooking the pie.
That's thermal energy transfer. But I think you were close, Mr. Scobie.
He needs new glasses.
Thought he was emptying the sock. I'm sorry, maybe I need some more sleep. Well, thank you for that report. We now move on to business and financial.
Mrs. Woods-Bicki, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Good evening, everyone.
Sorry, I didn't realize you were there.
Sorry, I couldn't be there in person, but I'm here.
You don't get a grand introduction, then.
Okay, all right, I'll take it. So I've included in your packet a year-to-date budget report dated March 8th, 2022, for your information, and I've also included a listing of transfers, some with, between the same series for your information, and some between different series that we'd request, that I request your approval of. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I have a short report tonight.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the list of transfers dated March 8th, as presented by the business meeting.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Just have a question. Why is there a decrease in solar savings?
I, I've noted, we've noticed the solar just seems to be down, and I believe it has to do with the weather. On days when it's not as bright and sunny, which we've had a lot of like just overcast days this past year, and, you know, with the snow, when the snow is on the solar arrays, they don't tend to produce as much solar, so we've just been noticing a decrease in our solar savings. And I believe it just has to do with the weather. I mean, I'm not privy to all the information of what the solar energy companies do, but Mr. Fahy and I had had a discussion about that because he agreed with me as well. You know, that the energy just doesn't seem to be being produced as much as it had been in the past, and I believe it has to do with the weather.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Good question, because they're trying to push everyone to go to solar and.
Right.
Around here in the winter.
Is our equipment outdated? Do you know?
I think so.
The equipment on the rooftop arrays for the middle school and high school are brand new. I would say one of the issues too with the Rutland Project that we partner with the town for is that the savings, like there's an increase in the rate that they charge us because we have to pay for, pay additionally for the solar savings that we receive. So every year increases, there's an increase in the amount that we have to pay the solar company in Rutland. So it's actually a decrease, it would be a decrease in our savings. So that's one of the things with the Rutland Project. But as far as the middle school and high school, our solar arrays are brand new. We did have a point at the high school where the solar arrays were non-functional for like a month's period of time, but they have been put back up online and everything seems to be running according to plan. I believe, you know, as the, you know, as the spring comes and we get more sunshine, like beautiful days like today, that we will increase on our solar, but I feel like there's just been a lot of rain and dreary days, and you just don't get the solar benefits that on those days.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.